All right, so the first order of approval is the minutes of the June 20 regular meeting. Anybody have any comments on those minutes?
It's like a paragraph that I couldn't understand. Of course, now I don't have it on. I was just reading it before I came in. But it was a paragraph that seemed to get a bit jumbled. I don't seem to have the minutes. Oh, thanks. Yeah, it was that one. Right here, this one. It was like, so line 59 and 60. It's like, would the condition that the building be completed by the end of then 13A that was standing above conditions 13? I'm not sure with that. I just feel like it's worded funny. I'm not sure if there's a, that's how it's supposed to be.
Well, condition 13 was the provision that they could not go past 90%.
Okay, just 13A that was standing above conditions 13. Okay, maybe that's just the way it's, I'm just reading it funny. If you guys think it sounds right, then it's fine. Good enough, absolutely.
Are you okay, Kevin?
No. Need help here?
Oh, yeah.
Here, here's the minutes. There's the lines.
I have something that might be quick, Dave.
You made the motion.
Somebody making a motion? No, I have a comment I want to make on this.
Okay.
Okay. So on line 53, it reads apartments are CO ready, comma, the CO board cannot move forward. What's the CO board?
Let me look at it because we're sharing minutes.
Yeah, 53. I've been doing this a long time. I never heard of the CO board. I'm not sure what that.
I think that's a typo.
Yeah, but there's no board.
There's no board.
Should it say building?
It should say the CEO can't be issued.
There is, there's no CO board.
Right. Good catch. So we can amend that to say that a certificate of occupancy cannot be issued until the zoning commission approves.
Drake, what?
The condition of the building.
George, I'm sorry. What's the password for the iPad? Thank you. I knew it was something easy. I just couldn't remember what it was. Thank you.
That's what I needed too.
Very difficult to figure out.
If you don't mind, let us spell out the word certificate of occupancy. Might also be helpful.
Well, where it says CO board, that would be a plural. Certificates, because there's.
Certificates of occupancy cannot move forward until, yes.
There you go. Okay. We need. You got the password. Okay.
Anyone else?
How do we get the Dropbox?
Give the email.
No, actually, I agree with Diane here that that paragraph does not make sense.
I think it needs a comma or two.
Would the condition of the building be completed by the end of the? Yeah, that doesn't make sense, but I'm not sure what it's supposed to say.
Exactly. I'm like, I'm not sure quite exactly what we're getting at there.
I think this is what, remember, this was the applicant speaking at the time. The applicant said, the applicant said they have families that want to move into the apartment.
Should it say that are CO ready?
No, it didn't say they wanted to. It said they're ready to.
That's not the line.
That's not the line we're worried about.
I think it's.
A motion, so we need to look back at the suggested motion.
I'm more than happy to go back and listen to the tape and get it right.
Now, the only thing we added there was the date. But it should have been the recommended motion with the, completed by the end of December 2022.
That's right.
But other than that, it was the standard motion. But that's not it.
Why don't we table the minutes?
Yeah. I'm not sure.
We need to move on here. We got a full house.
This thing should also refer to the fact that on December 22, if the building's not done, they're going to forfeit the bond.
Correct.
It doesn't say that.
Well, they're posting a bond and says they'll be done by then.
But if they're not.
If they're not, they forfeit the bond.
But it doesn't say that.
Doesn't have to, I don't think. That's what the purpose of posting the bond was.
Well, who knows that?
Who knows that?
There's people watching on TV. There's people sitting here. There's people at prior meetings.
George, can you make sure that we make that clear?
Will do.
Please.
Maybe it's a parenthetical there. Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Okay, you happy, Bruce?
Well, I'm not thrilled, but I'm here.
Honest answer.
Okay. All right. So we, public hearing has been withdrawn, so we, that's the end of speaking for you guys. And moving on to new business, number one is withdrawn, no, number one is the application of Antonio Five LLC for a site plan amendment for the reconfiguration of the parking lot at 1225 to 1243 Hot Meadow Street.
I think they're in the hall.
They are. That is very small.
Mr. Richmond, what do you think that is?
Business opportunity.
All right.
He bought it. He doesn't need it.
What did I just do?
Yes. Who is going to speak to this application?
Is it just me? Okay. Good evening. Terri Ann Hahn, Principal, LADA PC Land Planners. We have the site plans for the project. The application is for the property which is known as 1225 to 1243 Hot Meadow Street, which includes the building of Sunrise State Farm and Dunkin' Donuts is part of this property, but there's a lease area associated with that, so we didn't include that. It's tsunami, but it's not for the overall calculation piece. The purpose of this application is that we had some discussion about improving the, some of the pavement on the property was starting to deteriorate, and we were looking at making improvements at the parking areas around State Farm and the Sunrise, and came to the realization that the entry drive and the existing parking spaces were, did not meet the current requirements. So we started looking at how do we make this so that it actually meets the requirements. There are a number of existing nonconformities related to the property that we cannot affect at this point. There's some parking here. Obviously, the parking around the Sunrise is old highway commercial and isn't one of those things that you can fix or bring into conformance. But we are not increasing the nonconformities. As a matter of fact, we're decreasing that by improving the width of the driveways and improving the overall parking. The existing parking, as you can see, is kind of scumbles itself. Was a combination of different properties that sort of gone aggregated. There are connections and there are not connections, and in some cases, there is not a connection, but that doesn't seem to stop anyone. They just drive over it. So what we're trying to do, this is the existing conditions, and what we're proposing is one that looks like a much more conventional parking lot. We're connecting down the driveway, around this way, and also a second road here. So it all meets the current requirements for parking with respect to the square footage of the buildings that are on the property, as well as the configuration outside of those things that are already existing nonconforming. So it's, it's a relatively straightforward application. It's not complicated. There is some planting proposed. We prepared an erosion control plan, that sort of thing, but essentially, that is the scope of the project.
Questions from the commissioners?
They will say they did just drive by it earlier, and it really does need some work. You're absolutely right. I did notice it's like, it looks almost like an old farm road in the back of that. What's the story with that?
So, so the way the property works is there's an old, there's a pre-existing storage area back here. There is some discussion in the past about connecting it to other things, but it actually ends at the property line. So it looks like there's an old parking area that goes up the hill.
Yeah.
We're taking some of that pavement out because we are, we want to make sure we do not increase the overall impervious surface. So that's going to come down and so that that is available. We have no net increase in the impervious surface.
Others?
Gary, maybe you could just comment on, maybe I should have read it more closely, the 13 comments by the town engineer.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I think his conclusion was that if all of those were included in the plan that is approved, then he approves it. But are you, I know you're not an engineer, but is this sort of settled territory?
Some of it, some of it, let me, I'll go through each, you know, quickly, each one of them. Item number one, we did in fact include a parking calculation, but it did not include Dunkin' Donuts, and we were consistent with that application. It doesn't, it doesn't apply, and therefore, we would not be changing the plans. Item number two refers to the existing striping. Our survey didn't come with an existing striping, but we did go through and calculate all of them and count them, so we did include that in our parking count. Item number three is one that I believe is part of the conditions, proposed conditions of approval. That's the spot grades for the handicap ramp. Items number four, five, and six refer to coordination with the sidewalk. Again, that's part of one of the conditions of approval, and we are already aware of that. So we did include the town sidewalk out here, but the logistics, it's going to be a question of who comes first. And we don't have any problems with that. Six, seven. Item number seven was.
Parking setbacks.
Right. Now, that is existing nonconforming, and we've made it slightly better, but it remains existing nonconforming. Item number eight refers to.
Curb cut.
The curb. Again, that's not, again, that's not something that we can do anything about at this point. Removing or changing the curb cut along Eli will eliminate some of the existing parking spaces, and I don't think that's really what anybody wants at this point. So that's eight. Number nine referred to, that was something that's also already on the plans.
That was kind of proposed on the westernmost portion of the lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So there was some clarification that needed to be done. There is a small area that remains paved, but the rest of it is removed, so I will clarify that on the plans so that everybody knows what's coming out and what's not. I think that's part of the proposed conditions. Number 10 was the.
Monitoring wells.
Right. It's, those exist at this point. Those are no longer, those are not active. We have a sign off, so those will be capped up and removed.
What's the sign off from?
The DEP. So that's, that's taken care of there. Item number 11.
Proposed square footage areas of impervious area on the subject.
Yeah. So we did in fact provide that, so there are no drainage calculations that are proposed. So it is a no net increase of impervious surface. Number 12 was.
So the last two are the curb cuts and signed by a PE.
Right. And it doesn't have to, that's a sort of misunderstanding of how things work. We are landscape architects. We're allowed to sign the plans. I think the point was that I didn't submit stamped plans. We always submit those at the end after the approval, so that's not a problem. So really, it's conditions three, nine, and 10, I think, that of his letter that would require plan changes. And I think that's what you had integrated into that second item. So there were three of them that require some minor plan changes.
And I'm sorry, you're not going to adjust the curb cuts? Is that on Eli?
Correct.
So and, and the town, the engineering department's in agreement with that?
That's correct. We met with the engineer department. The applicant has had conversations with the town engineer's office, and we have incorporated what they considered to be those, those conditions we talked about into new condition number three, which is attached on new draft motion. It's in front of you. So that's what we did after working with the applicant. Essentially, added that condition that incorporates three separate labeling and identifiers. So yes, staff, staff recommends approval. We think it's a good project, and it is, it's a great improvement over the existing condition.
Well, the whole neighborhood, to the Antonio family's decision to invest more down there is significantly upgraded, and this is just one more step. It's impressive.
With the state project on this, or town project on the sidewalks, will it continue across it? It doesn't show it in front of Sunrise.
I don't, right now, I'm not 100% sure of how far it goes. I just, I know that it's here. There was some discussion about running it in the island, but I don't know what the final version of the town plan was. That wouldn't affect us one way or another at this point.
Anyone else? Anne?
No.
Hannah?
No.
More, Bruce?
No, no, I was ready to make a motion if.
Okay. Go ahead, Bruce.
And I would move approval of the application, where's the number here? 22-17 of, for 1225 through 1243 Hot Meadow Street. A site plan amendment to reconfigure and upgrade a parking lot located at 1225 through 1224, 12, excuse me, 1220, 1243 Hot Meadow Street, map 105, block 403, lot 019. Subject to the following conditions. The first conditions, the property shall be developed in substantial conformance with the site plan set dated June 15, 2022, prepared by LADA PC. Condition two, the applicant shall coordinate with the town of Simsbury on the construction of the town sidewalk proposed plan for fall 2022. Condition three, prior to the issuance of zoning permit, the site, the site plan shall be revised to A, show spot grades for accessible parking spaces. B, label existing monitoring wells. C, clarify and/or label the area between saw cuts, parenthetically, westernmost portion of, of the plan. Condition four, an administrative zoning permit is required for construction. Condition five, the commission authorizes staff to approve minor changes to the approved plans, such as landscaping, grading, et cetera. Said changes are to be made in writing to staff and approved prior to implementation. End of motion.
Second, Kevin, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstain? Okay, carry six, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next application is the 22-12 of the town of Simsbury, Christine Raca de Ferro.
22-20.
22-20?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For a sign permit for construction.
Withdrawn.
30-foot illuminated sign at 1375 Hot Meadow Street.
I'm Kelly Beckensaw. I'm the owner and managing member of International Skating Center. So please forgive me. I did not realize there were two separate meetings. I guess I missed the sign permit meeting at 5:30. I thought it was only this meeting. If any of you are involved in that, I apologize. But so we are proposing installing a new illuminated monument sign on the front island on the corner of Hot Meadow. It's 30 square feet. It's about 5.4 inches high and 10 feet long. And I believe it's going to be reusing the existing lighting.
Yes.
And landscaping as part of the layout. So I don't know if you have any. Sorry?
That's the sign.
That is the sign, yes.
It's beautiful.
Yes. It's a little better than what we've got right now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Sign Pro did a great job. There is existing lighting, as she mentioned, that would spotlight. Our ideal was to actually have lighting inside, but I understand that doesn't meet zoning requirements. So we have existing lighting, a spotlight that just hasn't worked in 20 years that we got fixed. So there will be a spotlight on that sign for nighttime, and there's a bunch of shrubbery that we will also remove and just put ground covering on.
Okay. Questions, the commission?
So there won't be any provisions for other tenants in the building then? Like you had Play Strong or something like that?
Yes, not at that, not at this time. Play Strong has actually moved out. They've moved to a different location, and we're going to be utilizing that space.
Okay, so you're going to use it 100% of the building?
Yes, we will.
I'll just reiterate what I said a minute ago. My daughter played hockey there for many years, and I can tell you that these improvements are wonderful.
Of course.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm very happy. But I'm just curious. I think in the past, you guys would have, you know, like a movable, so you could say if there's an event or something like that, so that's obviously not going to be on the sign as well, right?
We're not planning it for this sign. Another thing we would have loved to have done is this kind of an automated thing. Can't do it. So we will, you know, use sandwich boards and what have you. We're also going to be using much different and improved social media platforms for a lot of that stuff.
Awesome.
So, yeah, potentially more signage requests in the future, but for now, we just need to get rid of the ugly one.
Just as a point of information.
Yes.
Our zoning regulations for, I don't know if it's fair to say decades, but at least for years, has prohibited internally that signage.
Yes.
It's not new.
No, I realize that.
Let me just ask this. Did somebody else present to DRB on your behalf? Did you do that, George?
I think staff was here for that, for that meeting, but the applicant wasn't in attendance. The DRB.
Comments from DRB?
Yeah, so the DRB has sent a positive recommendation to you. I think there was confusion about whether there was lighting or whether there weren't. The DRB recommended that staff work with the applicant to provide appropriate lighting.
That's great.
Thank you.
Well, speaking of that, though, has, what we've seen instead of spotlights is a lot of the sign companies are now coming with an LED around or a different way of doing it because the spotlights aren't always successful. And I was just wondering if you had explored that with your sign vendor?
We did. We were kind of going down a path of urgency and reusing what we already have. We feel that the lighting that we have down there will be adequate.
Anne?
No, I think the sign looks lovely.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is you said you were going to pull all the shrubs up and just have ground cover, but I mean, staff does recommend landscaping, which is typical for signs, so.
I just meant loan to the ground.
Oh, yeah.
Then what's there?
I'm tired.
Okay. No more questions? We can just, make a motion. You want to do it, Bruce?
Sure.
Clean up here, isn't that?
I move that we approve the application 22, excuse me, 22-20 for Christine of Sign Pro Inc., agent for a sign permit to construct a 30-plus or minus square foot monument sign at the property located at 1375 Hot Meadow Street. Accessory, access, excuse me, access, assessors. Assessors map 105, block 403, block 15A. The commission makes the following findings in granting the sign permit. The sign conforms to sign regulations and sign standards found in section, section 9.3 of the zoning regulations. Sign permit approval is subject to the following conditions of approval. There's only one. An administrative zoning permit is required for sign installation. End of motion.
You second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any more comments, discussion?
Is it clear in the application that we're using the current? Because the application didn't mention lighting. So can we just amend it to include the existing lighting? You okay with that, Bruce?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay with the second?
Okay with the second, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Six, nothing. He carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Our next order of business is application 22-22. Beth Walker School for Site Plan to Construct a 24,664-square-foot dormitory.
Thank you. For the record, Tom Daley with SLR Consulting. With me this evening also is Beth McWilliams from At the Walker School. Martha Fosse will be presenting with me, and Kathleen Turner, who represents the school. So we're excited to be back before this commission. It's been a few years since we had an application for the school, but we're back before you for a new dormitory. So just to confuse, confuse things, the dormitory we came to you many years ago, we're calling that the new dorm. This is actually called the upper dorm. So just to be clear, so we have the new dorm and the upper dorm, and we're not changing names, so we're sticking with it. So as you know, the At the Walker School is a very well organized campus. This is on the, it would be on the east side of Bushy Hill Road, and the campus is organ, on that side of the campus is really well organized. We have an academic core. If you remember, we came before you with the Centennial, which has been a wonderfully, just a wonderful project. Then we have down on the lower area, those are the athletic fields. But on the south end of campus is the residential core for the, for the campus. It's, it's where both faculty housing and the dorms exist. And when we came before you, and I forget the year, it might have been around 2008 when you came to you with the new dorm, we always envisioned there was going to be another dorm to the south. So on this graphic before you this evening, tonight is, so on the left-hand side, so north is pointing to the left on this map. We have the new dorm that is kind of a black outline to the left. And then to the right is Cluit, which is an older dorm. And kind of nestled, and even when we put the new dorm in, we really left enough space in between the two dorms. So here we are, coming back to you with, you know, some planning many years later. But the proposal this evening is for a new upper dorm, a new dorm building nestled between the two existing dorms. Obviously, this is not really a dorm that is going to facilitate an increase in enrollment. It's really about housing choices and for the incoming students and really kind of keeping up with the trend in private schools for on-campus housing. So the building, so we have this existing loop road that runs around the campus. Marian Thompson Architects has worked really hard to really engage two sides of the building. The backside of the building was really, for many years, were considered just the emergency access drive, but really, we're trying to create that as more of a pedestrian way. That's really almost a superhighway down to the athletic fields and the new Centennial Center. And then the other, on the other side of the building, at the lower part of the map, there's a pathway, and that really sends the students off to Beaverbrook, and these are really, really strong hubs. But really, everybody's kind of moving to the left side of the plan as they come out of dorm. So Marian Thompson's have really, it's always hard with a building to have a back-of-house side of it, and they've worked really, done a wonderful job to really embrace both sides. So the building, and Martha will get into it more, is designed in an L faction to the point where at the rear of the building is kind of created this wonderful courtyard. It's, it allows for the students to gather and have a thing. Actually, even on the right-hand side, there's a lawn, kind of a slope, that is almost like an amphitheater space to kind of create there, and that yellow line is really a pathway for the, for the girls to come out of the back of the building and kind of shoot right over down towards the athletic fields and there. On the left side of the building, we do have a small loading area, and we've nestled that in. This site does have some topography to it, so the buildings are really shorter in the front and then taller in the back. So this, this project kind of has been designed to embrace that. In the front, earlier revisions, we had some more parking in front of the building, but we've reduced it down to a really minimal. So really, we have two handicapped spaces and then another space. And we found it to be more cost-effective to do a little. And we found it to be more cost-effective to do a little expansion of put four parking spaces on the other side of the access drive instead of getting more pavement in front of the building. We've worked closely with the architects and we really have some strong landscape buffers. We're really trying to integrate this into an overall kind of residential campus, but at the same point, the buildings have different identities, so we have some strong landscaping buffers between both of the buildings. We have, to the page to the top here, when we came with the new dorm, we had a stormwater basin that was built there. We want to really build upon that infrastructure today. We're just making it longer. So you'll see that green elliptical space, that's an existing stormwater basin that we're just going to stretch out. So really, we're able to keep a lot of the infrastructure that we put in with the previous dorm. We're never perfect. We have to relocate one hydrant and one catch basin, but ultimately, we left this area as kind of a blank slate for us to come forward. We have received town staff comments. We provided responses to those in there. I think engineering had a few minor comments and we've addressed those. WPCA asked for, I think, one lateral to be increased to eight inches and we also took care of that. So we believe that we've addressed all staff comments to date and we've incorporated those in there. The one, two things that you should understand, the fire department wanted, they wanted additional hydrant that we're going to put in the back of the building. Per the fire code, accessways have to be 20 feet wide. The existing accessway in the back of the building is only 19 feet, so we have to add one foot to make it, but it's an NFPA requirement, so while it's more historically there, we're addressing that. And then the throat of the driveway into the, into the small parking area, they're also asking that to be 18, 20 feet wide, so we're going to widen that a little bit. But it is designed in a way that the pedestrians are the primary. We're actually not having a drop and a handicap area. We want those girls to feel like they really, they are the, the primary path. The only people parking in that space are actually faculty that are living in the dorm, so there's no real traffic going on there. But ultimately, the, the site plan, I think, is pretty straightforward. You're, this is virtually not visible from the street because there's, if you think about just to the plan, there is the tennis courts and there's a pretty large vegetated buffer. So you may get some views as you come southbound on Bushy Hill, you can see the church and you may see some views there, but really, you're not going to see much of that. And really, this building is really designed in a way to enhance those views across the athletic fields and out towards Hugh Blaine Tower in the woods, which is just an absolutely wonderful view. So Marian Thompson's office really studied this strongly. With that, I think I'm going to ask Martha to come up and walk you through the architectural plans. Thank you.
So this is just a quick design sketch at the beginning, kind of looking at the first view of putting in an L-shaped building that starts to make courtyards between the two existing dorms and trying to make a residential center. So there's a few things that the building's trying to do at a larger scale.
I want to stand in front of Michael there because there's a recording.
Sorry. Got it. Okay. So the, the L-shaped building does a couple things. It makes courtyards against existing buildings, so trying to make a kind of center that's a residential center for the campus. And starts to negotiate the hill. So this, this drawing shows the kind of courtyard entry that happens from the upper street, which is at the bottom of the page, and then the courtyard that's formed between Cluit and the L shape of the building, that puts two entrances into the building at different levels that join in a common area at the center, a double-height space. So when you enter from the street level, you get a view out to the hills and down into the common area and where other people are entering from the more pedestrian side of the building. And we're trying to improve the, the two existing dorms really have, exist as kind of back-of-house on that street, and so this, making spaces between them and using landscape, we're hoping to also activate those sides of the building, which might be more of a kind of bringing people through a pathway up as opposed to entering from that sidebar, and we're not changing those buildings, but making it more activated, making it more of a there, there. So this is just a quick sketch, early sketch, looking at those courtyards and the forms of the two buildings. You'll see the, the new dorm is on the right side in this image, which is a more traditional shape, and then the Cluit, which is an older dorm, has a flat roof and courtyard building. So this is trying to negotiate between those, those two as well. And a view from the courtyard, design sketch, so the entry from the more pedestrian side of the campus. So we're really trying to engage the side of the campus with the view, and most of the cars stay up on the upper road and park, and so this side can, if this side can be activated, it still has a road on it, but it can be more pedestrian and more linked to the, the kind of fabulous site that the school occupies. So here, this is the bottom plan, so you enter, on the lower level, you enter from the courtyard. You can see the path coming into a porch, an outdoor covered porch, into a vestibule and then right into the common space, which is the area that's colored yellow. The purple is indicating the faculty units, which are, occupy the ends and the knuckle on different floors. There's four of them that go different. The one on the bottom right is just one story and then the other two, the other ones are two stories, and so there's eyes on every floor, at least two, two units open on each floor. And then the blue, the blue units are the, are the dorm rooms, and there's a sprinkling of double and single rooms, and the green is shared bathrooms in the hall. But most of this floor is under, built into the hill, so it's our utility spaces. And then this is the level next up, and you can see you enter from the bottom of the page, from the courtyard at the front that Tom was showing, into a space that has an open stair down and also a view into the double-height space with the fireplace. And also, you get the huge view out to the landscape. And again, you see the, the faculty units and the dorm rooms equally spaced. And then the third floor, again, has a kind of gathering space in that center knuckle with the view out, and then two of the, the front two faculty units go up to that level. This is the roof plan, which is a kind of unusual shape, but we've, there's a strong desire to be very sustainable, so the, the roof slopes prioritize the southern slopes so that we have maximum kind of southern sloping roofs to hold PV panels. And then the parts that are rendered in green are green roofs. So there's a green roof that kind of wraps, and then the entry roofs are green roofs, so they're planted, really kind of layered with landscape.
So those are solar panels on the roof?
That's what those are indicating, yeah, the rectangles, yeah.
I couldn't hear what you said.
Sorry, am I, am I speaking loud enough or, yeah. So that's the, yeah, the roof, that you'll see it, and we have some perspectives that should make it a little clearer. So this is the, the two elevations that are part of the back courtyard that faces the view. The top is the east elevation, and you can see the glassy part in the center is that knuckle of kind of common space where the students gather, and then the smaller windows are the dorm rooms and the faculty units occupy the edges. And then the southern facade, which is primary low sloping roof, which you, won't be visible, and then trellises and vine, vine structures that are allowing some, for more shading along that wall, and another kind of layer of landscape. The top image here is the entry from the, the upper road and the parking, so the, the entry at the center, the glassy area, you enter through another covered porch for gathering, and it's also layered with a small garden and the green roof.
So the porch is a green roof too?
Yes. And the top is, by building it down the hill, we are, we are allowed to get that, the building's much shorter on the, the approach, so it has a much more residential feel, which is another kind of goal at that street. So that's the back. The north face, which is between the, faces the new dorm and makes a kind of courtyard there and kind of steps down the hill. And then we have some, some renderings from the courtyard. So you'll see the, the vine trellises on the southern facade. The, all the faculty units have outdoor screened gardens, so they enter from a private, a private kind of yard to make it more, they're, they're living more independent. So this is the front entry from the street. You see the, the courtyard made in the front, made more with landscape that provides a kind of a place to enter at the front.
I'm sorry, when you say green roof, so you're saying it's actually like a growing?
Yeah, it's like sedum.
Oh, that's very interesting.
What is that?
They would be sedums. I mean, this looks a little bit like a Chia Pet, but not on purpose. We worked on it for a really long time, but it won't look like a Chia Pet. But, uh, sedum plantings and/or moss.
What's underneath it, a metal roof or?
A membrane roof, yeah. So this is the southern facade, and you can see the entry from the path into the center open area that's double-height. The faculty unit's on the end, which has a balcony, the southern facade, which gets, has a very deep overhang as well, so it shields the southern sun, I mean, the summer sun from the windows. And I think that's it.
When you were doing this, how does it relate to the other two dorms? They're all seem to be very different.
Yes, and as a kind of given condition, they're very different, and they, we've kind of approached it to allow them to talk to each other through a landscape space as opposed to having the same spot. I mean, we couldn't match one of this, if we matched one of the styles, then the other one would be dogged and out. So to really have its own identity, but to make spaces with the other dorms so that they can have a conversation, and they're layered with the same landscape that then allows the, the communication, but the styles are different.
Yeah, I wouldn't have talked to Cluit.
I lived in a Cluit in my, in my.
Oh, not this Cluit.
I'm Willa's Cluit.
Yeah. Yeah. It's the oldest of the three.
Okay. One more thing on the solar panels. Is there enough up there to make a significant contribution to the power requirements of that building? Does it generate half the need, a quarter of the need, nowhere near that?
We're getting, we're working on that right now, but it's quite a few.
Okay.
Are you going to use it specifically for the building or does it go into the grid?
That, I don't know yet either. I think there's a few different ways to, to secure them either by, yeah, I think we're good price pool than look at the energy use.
We're currently undergoing some energy modeling efforts to understand our energy usage going forward. Will it be offset by the solar panels and then, you know, how we're going to approach procurement, whether we're going to go for a purchase agreement or if we're going to purchase outright and then kind of back of meter installation.
I find the green roof very exciting. You don't see very many here.
Nope.
It's wonderful. I think it's great that we're, we're finally seeing something like that. And, and the, the shading with the planting and things like that, so.
With that, we need one half may answer any questions. The commission may have.
To go back to the conversation here, so this, this building is wood, whereas the other two are brick?
Cluit is painted and, but they're both painted. The other one is, is shingle as well.
They're both, they're all pure wood?
Clavoured. But not, not painted wood, not exposed wood, not natural wood. We're using a heat-treated cypress. It's also burnt, so it's going to be used outside and is durable.
Does design review pass on this?
Design review, actually got an opportunity to, to see it twice. They did preliminary meeting with design review and then reports tonight, and they pass on a positive recommendation on the project. No additional conditions.
Any more comments?
You said it's going to be burnt, so it's not going to be a black burn.
No.
It's not going to be the charred color.
It's, we tried to get it as close as possible up in that rendering, yeah.
Because I've seen that, I've seen it where it's the, the black.
Yeah, this, this wood is a heat-treated so that it's, it's heated all the way through and that makes it, gives it the most sustainability.
Oh, so it's not like charring outside, which is the other treatment.
No, and the charring raises the, well, takes away the softer wood, so it raises the grain a little bit, but it doesn't make it dark. They do have versions that are black, but not the one we chose.
Okay. Anybody ready to make a motion?
I feel like today's your day. It doesn't matter, clean up better.
Yeah, okay. Let me take care of that.
Do we have documentation that engineering, of the replies to engineering?
Well, you have, you have my report, which is, so the applicant responded to the, to the, to the comments from both fire district and town engineering, and they are reflected in the revised plans, so dated July 18.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Are we ready? Okay. I move that the zoning commission approve application 22-22 for 230 Bushy Hill Road, a site plan to construct a 24,644 square foot plus or minus dormitory on the campus located at 230 Bushy Hill Road. Assessors Map E14, Block 115, Lot 006. Zone R40, subject to the following conditions. Condition one, the property shall be developed in substantial conformance with the site plan set dated June 27, 2022, revised July 18, 2022, prepared by SLR and submitted as Exhibit 3. The property shall be developed in substantial conformance with the architectural set prepared by Mary Thompson Architects dated July 6, 2002, and submitted as Exhibit 2. Condition three, prior to the issuance of a building permit for this project, the applicant shall submit to the town of Simsbury an erosion and sediment control bond in the form acceptable to the town in the amount of $25,000. Condition four, prior to the release of any bonds for this project, the applicant shall submit two sets of Mylars and one paper set for signature and, and recordation. Condition five, an administrative zoning permit is required for construction. Condition six, the commission authorizes staff to approve minor changes to the approved plans such as landscaping, grading, et cetera. Said conditions, said changes are to be made in writing to staff and approved prior to implementation. End of motion.
Have a second?
Second.
I just, I know this is like really nitpicking, but it says here dated July 6, 2002, but it's 2022.
The other thing is, I think I heard Bruce say 24,644, and it's really 24,664. Right?
I'll second those changes.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? No? Carry six, nothing. Thank you very much.
Very much. Appreciate your time.
That's great.
It is. I wish my daughter's like.
Okay. Next application is application 22-23 of Infinity 4 LLC. I believe, for site plan amendment to provide outdoor vehicle storage.
I just have this.
It costs me $20.
No refunds?
I'm going to, I'm going to use both, just in case. I don't want to turn my back on you guys. Hopefully you guys can see it enough. So what we are seeing.
Could you introduce yourself?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Do you have to say your name, please, and where you?
I'm David Barr. I'm partner David Richmond. We are the owners and developers of the new Talkeem Mountain Self-Storage Facility.
Thank you.
What we are trying to get permitted this evening is the addition on the southern space for outdoor storage of boats and RVs and things like that. have, so we wanted to provide this for the town, and there really isn't any of this in the area, you have to go to like South Windsor. So we felt it was a pretty viable option, and with the berm that is going to run parallel to Route 10, it's on the western side of the property, so closer to the street, you may have seen it, it's already fairly significant, and that needless to say has not been planted yet. Once that is planted, I don't think that this facility is going to be seen really at all. Dave Ziyaks from F A Heskey should be here tonight, he apologizes, he's actually in Colorado meeting his new grandchild. I'm going to tell you guys that. Otherwise, he'd be doing this, and I'd be sitting there with him. So, again, it's just, it's additional outdoor parking, the surface is permeable, we're going to use a recycled type material, a processed material. Dave told me that the original drainage calculations actually accounted for this space. We were not going to do it now, originally we were going to wait till the facility opened and we got going, but the problem is, we're going to have to bring in all the material, and we'll be trucking across all the brand-new asphalt, so it makes sense to do it now from that standpoint. There's no wetland concerns on the site whatsoever, and I think that's really about it. He wanted me to tell you though, that the original calculations did account for that acre.
Okay.
Pretty straightforward stuff.
First, another commission? Well. Bruce? No. I'm interested, just, I've seen this before, but I've, I have neighbors who have a sailboat that they put behind the house, which, you know, it's behind the house, but the mast is about 15 feet taller than the house.
She told me to take the mast down.
Well, I just assumed that a mast that tall doesn't, isn't made to be hinged, but I don't know anything about boats, except for the little one I own, that doesn't run all the time. But on something like this, you know, first of all, I see in the drawing that the berm goes, you know, the full length, but I wasn't sure if that's a revision to the drawing, or that's the way it was originally proposed and is constructed.
Pretty much the way it's constructed currently.
And so, you don't know the elevation, the target elevation of the plantings?
At the highest point, I, to a two? To a six? I have it. I can't remember that, to be honest with you. Thanks, George. Suffice it to say, the ones that's planted, it's going to screen the vast majority of the whole place.
Well, the thing is that I don't keep the old applications that we review here, and after a while, they're not too easy to get, but it's not necessarily your responsibility, but out along the roadway, when apartments were put in on the north, on the southern chunk of this property, there was a sidewalk, an asphalt sidewalk put out there, that connected with the town of Avon sidewalk. Is there, is there a sidewalk on that drawing, or in front of you?
There's quite a bit of land between the berm and the road.
Yeah, so that's for us to take up with Mr. Greenberg the next time we see him. If he's home watching this on television, he should know that we're going to request some action.
I don't, I don't know Mr. Greenberg's intentions for.
I don't either, but there's a, there's a concerned neighbor that I hear from about that sidewalk, so anyway, it's not going to go away. Thank you.
Sir. Yeah, so, I don't, there was an issue with the parking in side yard was not sufficient. It's 10 feet and required 15, so that, on our map here, the row on the left is not the building weight.
So originally, the comment, the comment that was generated was incorrect, it is a rear yard, the correct setback is 10 feet.
For a side yard?
Well, it's a rear yard. Access is going to be from here, so it's a rear yard.
Well, the address is Hot Metal Street.
The functional access will be from the Chubb Drive. So that's, that was the conclusion we came to.
This is, this is the Chubb Drive on the north end here, and the entrance is.
Up top.
But the address is.
From the most traveled street, it's side yard. And to the south of this is the, what building is that? What is there?
It is Kira Leaf. Yes, sir.
And so there, what protection is there visually between Kira Leaf and the parking lot?
Our parking lot?
Yeah.
But their parking lot?
Yeah, so there is none.
Correct. There is some minor vegetation, but there's nothing of any significance. I know that they're getting ready to do a rather large addition, I'm sure you guys are aware of that, so.
No, we're not.
All right, so you will be able to actually then look across their lawn and see all of the vehicles parked here?
Correct. Yeah, it's all paved back there, there's no grass.
No, there is in front of Kira Leaf.
In front, yes.
Yeah, so when you're driving Route 10, you would be able to.
No, no, no.
Why not?
Because it's screened by the berm.
The berm doesn't cover, it doesn't go all the way that far.
There's trees on the Kira Leaf property that currently screen, and I believe if the building goes where I think it's going, that will be the screen for our stuff.
You're not seeing.
I know.
Yeah, not necessarily.
I know.
And then the other thing, so there isn't any provision here for height, because when you do get the white street craft boats, they are pretty high.
So are the RVs.
Well, not as, yeah.
That's within your purview, for sure, yeah, that didn't, that didn't occur.
Well, you said we didn't actually cover storage parking lots in our, in our current reg.
It did.
I thought if we didn't cover it, it wasn't permitted.
That's true, so it's not a permitted use.
No, our staff's opinion is, is that this is a self-storage facility, which is permitted under your, under your regulations, and the outdoor storage is customary and accessory to these kinds of uses today.
Not in the sense that.
Well, we're not in the middle of a residential zone, there's.
I know, but it does.
Back by the river, and a Kira Leaf facility that you can't get into without all kinds of security, so I think there's.
But somebody has already commented about the buildings being visible, and I'm thinking, well, the boats won't be as, the buildings won't be as visible as the boats.
Well, I was thinking, I mean, I thought the same thing, and then I, but I know the trees have not been planted yet, which would make a difference, because I think I probably saw the same comments, but, what was I just going to say? Oh, yeah, have you had inquiries yet? Like, have people been already asking?
Reservations.
Like, so what do you, I mean, are they, are you looking at huge sailboats and large boats, or what?
RVs.
For the most part, what we're talking about would be boats that you could tow with your car.
I mean, that's what I'm thinking, like.
We're not, we're not talking about, you know, yachts.
You're near a marina at the beach, and like, you can't just take that.
Right, just put that on a trailer and drive it around.
Right.
And the RVs are what they are.
She has to drive 25 minutes to where they store their RV. She called me a year ago and said, I want to reserve, we have how many, I mean, it's most of the calls are from people that, I want it out of my driveway, to my yard, my neighbors are going to be thrilled, they don't have to look at it.
Yeah, that was a point, that was perhaps a rate of.
That's why we decided to do this.
It's better than having it in, in your neighbor's yard, for sure.
And since it's in previous, will it be, your spot be lined? Are you planning to line it?
Yes, we will line it. It's going to be, first of all, it'll be about a 12 or 18 inch base of compacted material, and then the recycled process will go on top of that, that will be compacted. It doesn't come out smooth like asphalt, but it comes out pretty flat and pretty, you know, pretty regularly, in regular shape in terms of the surface, and then we'll use line strippers to paint them.
And that's considered permeable?
Yes. It's an angular crushed product, so the water does pass, and again, like I said, Dave Ziyaks had already done the calculations in terms of his numbers and his drainage to accommodate for this last piece, for this extra piece.
Did I read about a tank, a propane tank, coming out?
Coming out of the ground, yes.
But being put back in above ground?
Yes.
So what, what is that for?
What's the propane for?
Yeah.
It heats the buildings, for the climate control.
Oh, it's for heat, okay.
Yes.
It's going in the same place?
These two buildings to the south are climate controlled.
Okay.
And one of these is partially climate controlled as well.
Okay.
So the propane is what heats the furnace, you know, runs the furnace.
So that, the underground tank is kind of in that little box at the top of where the parking lot is, is that where the, the above ground will go, or does it go back to the same place?
I'm not quite sure on that, to be honest, that's a better question for Dave right here. No, that's where it is.
Yeah, that's where it is now, but it doesn't go back to the same place?
Yeah, so let me, so let me just clarify, so the original proof, the original storage facility approval showed an underground propane tank right about where my cursor, oop, can you see my cursor?
No, can't see you.
Let's do that.
I can't see.
Be patient, be patient, right about here, if I recall.
No.
No, hang on a second, so the original storage approval was shown here, and this is where the underground tank was, so now it's moved above ground and about this location here. The original, the original applicant submission showed it still underground, and then it was revised to show it above.
So technically, there's no propane tank there at all, yet?
Not today, no.
But instead of it being dug out, it's just going to be put in another place? Like, it's not buried to begin with?
You haven't.
Yeah, that's what I mean, like, there is no tank already, so it is simply being placed, yes.
It's going to have bollards for protection and a fence around it.
And underground lines.
Some idea how big it is?
Underground lines.
How big? Not in gallons or whatever, vertically, how big is that tank?
Height-wise, you mean? Maybe three or four feet of most, kind of depends on which, you know, which base you put it on, or what kind of base it's.
But the berm will cover it.
Oh, yeah, and where it's placed now, here, you know, the berm is clearly going to be blocked out.
Yeah, okay.
To ask Bruce's question, there is a monitoring well on that site, and where is that? Is that under the, the new acre, or is it on the old part?
It's, it's back by the old railroad right away. It's on this property, it used to be.
Yeah, because I was mentioning the engineering.
Moved in the excavation.
But there will still be a monitoring site?
Yes, that condition was, you had attached a condition relative to that under the original approval, and so that, that condition is still there.
So if we go over that, well, I don't know, I don't remember what the condition was relative to that issue, but we'll go over there tomorrow and see if it's still there, yeah, because I know where the apartments were built, the first one that caught my attention is gone, and it's better now than in the 2007 proposal, it would have been buried under a Target or a Big Box store, but it seems to me that back then, the same thing was said, oh, those are, they're not activated, or D E P, you know, oh, they're sending reports, well, who did they send them to? Well, I don't know, they, they don't seem to send them to your office, but they sent them to somebody, and we have periodic conversations about it, but, yeah. The other comments?
You guys don't have any concern about catalytic converters going away?
We have cameras 24/7.
Yeah.
And it's illuminated until 9:00 P. M., and then in order to get in there, you have to drive through a gate or drive through a fence, so not at the moment.
I still remain concerned that when you're going to be driving down Hot Metal Street, you're going to see the tops of RVs and the tops of sailboats underneath Talke Mountain, and I'm concerned about that.
Best of my knowledge, any sailboat that you would be able to trailer, you do in fact drop the mast, you can't drive down the road with the mast up, it would take out the power lines and the streetlights and everything else, so.
We had a sailboat that was an Ode Marina, and you could trailer it, but you couldn't take the mast down.
An Ode Sailor?
No, they're a.
Like a 25-foot boat or something?
No, it was 19.
19, I can't believe that you would see that over the berm after it's planted, because the berm, did you find that, George, the height, by any chance?
Sir, it ranges, because the, it ranges a little bit, it's for about 6 feet to 8 feet as you go across the, as you go across the property from south to north.
And then the vegetation's on top of that?
And vegetation on top of that.
And, you know, we're going to start with like a 6 to 7-foot evergreen tree, we're going to start with a 2 and 1/2-inch caliber.
It's not going to hide one of this mast. I don't, I don't feel like I want to need to encourage an argument here, but I've seen the boat that my neighbor had, and that mast was taller than.
So we can make it very simple.
It's not your.
Put your mast down, you're not going to park here.
Yeah.
There won't be masts allowed.
Unless they're lowered, I mean, we can, we can make the rules, whatever you, whatever you need to make.
We won't allow.
Can we put, just under item three, where limit to vehicles, can we put a height limit on any of the vehicle? I don't know what the right number is, though.
I don't know about.
How big is an RV?
RVs can be big.
You've got to remember something, they're big like this, but they still have to go under the overpasses.
Oh, no, they're pretty tall.
No, but I understand, but they, they can't be taller than the overpasses.
Overpasses are what, 12 feet?
13, 6, or 12, 6, something, somewhere right in there.
Make it less than 13, 6.
So I, again, I don't know what the right number is here, are we sure?
Overpass, I mean, and I, a public highway overpass, 13, 6 is what you get.
What is the average? 13 or 14 feet for a Class A motorhome, looks like 14 feet is, well, just according to the internet.
We would confirm that with our internet over here, about 14 feet.
Our internets agree, so that's good.
So why don't we just use 14 feet as a condition, and if you find that that's really seriously compromising your business, just come back and consider another way. Consider amending. 14 feet.
And the mast, the mast thing, we can just tell people, you can't leave them up, period. They need to have to come off or.
I'm surprised that you guys are so enthusiastic about the business opportunity, and yet there are the other two operating, which I think you're affiliated with one.
And they're all, they're all full.
This isn't, I know, but with boats and RVs.
Somebody has that.
But there's no, I think this means there's no land.
Oh, you don't have the land, oh, okay. And then we approve one that's not started yet down at the Tavern Restaurant there on 315.
Oh, right.
And it's not been started, to my knowledge, but there was no talk of, now, they seem to have, they might have the land, I don't know, so maybe they'll be back.
I'm good with 14 feet.
Let's kind of come to a conclusion here. Are we positioned to make a motion on that, or solving that problem? The hand seems okay, done?
Hmm, I think that's all right.
You think that's all right?
I just don't like the idea of RVs and boats all parked in one big parking lot together, it's just not.
I totally agree.
Not something I'm.
It's as remote from other people as you can probably get.
But there's also a gateway, you know?
I know, consider the business that's next door in the gateway.
Well, it's a nice, it's a, what's inside doesn't matter.
When they do the addition, you won't even see us.
Yeah, well, that's what you said about the buildings, too, it will seal.
So did you write out one more condition there?
Well, just under, under three, I added maximum height of any vehicles limited to 14 feet.
Are you adding one, Bruce, or writing down the? I was just writing that down, just so, well, somebody else can read this, but. Why don't you read it, since you're on a roll tonight?
Make it a picture stuff.
Okay.
I think it's a hat-trick act.
Here we are. I move that the commission approve application 22-23 of Infinity 4 LLC, David Ziyaks' agent for a site plan amendment to allow an outdoor vehicle storage area associated with the self-storage facility at 34A Hot Metal Street. Map E18 block 117, lot 00-2, zone I1, P A D, subject to the following conditions. Condition one, the property shall be developed in substantial conformance with. Condition 1, the property shall be developed in substantial conformance with the site plan set dated April 6, 2021, revised July 14, 2022. F.A. Hesketh and Associates, Inc. Condition 2, the applicant shall submit two sets of MyLars and one paper set of approved documents for signature and recordation. Item, uh, condition 3, outdoor storage shall be limited to recreational vehicles, boats, campers, trailers, and other similar vehicles. Equipment, equipment, product, or vehicles related to commercial activity shall not be permitted. Maximum height of any vehicle limited to 14 feet. Condition 4, prior to the issuance of the administrative zoning permit for the outdoor storage component, the applicant shall revise the drainage plan and calculations to satisfaction of the town and the town engineering department. Condition 5, an administrative zoning permit is required for construction. Condition 6, the commission authorizes staff to approve minor changes to the approved plans such as landscaping, grading, et cetera. Said changes are to be made in writing to staff and approved prior to implementation. Condition 7, the conditions approved in, in application 2106, as applicable, remain in full force and effect. End of motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Janine. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Carry 6, nothing. Thank you. Okay, we have some discussion on cannabis. George has got an update for us.
So in, in your packet.
I'd like to invite all of you tomorrow morning, 8:30 AM. Library, Simsbury Government Affairs Committee is having a very special guest speaking.
George?
If that's an update, we're all fine.
I'll be there.
Thanks, Sue.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
So in, in your packet, you, we prepared a couple items. You know, the first, I call it zoning amendment framework, which I think sometimes is easier than a striking version. It tries to describe what sections of the ordinance you're trying to amend. And of course, remember, we're dealing with three different ordinances, even to prohibit.
Can we say regulation?
Would I say ordinance? I apologize, that's.
I know ordinance is used in some places, and.
Our zoning regulations?
Yeah, please, thank you.
What was I saying? Oh, so, 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 so what we're trying to do is, for our three zoning regulations, we have to, we have to at least identify the use and say whether it's permitted or not. Because if you remember, under the state regulations, if we're silent on it, it's deemed, cannabis establishments are deemed permitted. And so what you have here is, is a zoning framework that lays out essentially three primary things. One, that the cannabis establishments would not be permitted in the Simsbury Center Code at all. Two, cannabis establishments would not be permitted in the Hartford/Simsbury Form Base Code at all. And then the, the draft would include cannabis establishments, both retail, categories under retail, and categories under production or, or manufacturing. They would, would be permitted. For retail, following your instructions, we've, we identified cannabis establishments in the B3 zoning district. Caveat that it must be within 1,500 feet of the intersection of Bushy Hill and Albany Avenue, or 202 slash 44 and 167? And 167, so that was the direction to kinda head towards that node. And so that's what, that, that's what we had done. We capped it at 1 for retail with no other conditions. For, for production facilities, simply allowed them as a, as a matter of right, or, no, as a matter of right, as, as a special exception, all, these are all special exceptions. But production facilities permitted in the I-1 and 2 zoning districts.
I don't recall reading a cap on those.
So there, so we wrote under, for, for, for business permitted uses in the town of Simsbury zoning regulations, a maximum of one establishment. Of course, I've got a, a tense, I got a tense issue there, but a maximum of one establishment permitted within the town of Simsbury at any time.
Yeah. One in any category of business entity.
Okay.
Say that one more time.
One of each classification?
That refers to, for retail only.
That's what I thought. I'm raising the question, why wouldn't, why aren't, what, an affirmative vote? Why doesn't that consider carrying a cap on those other entities?
Because I didn't have that direction from, from you guys, so you certainly could do that, but the, the direction was to cap retail and had, had direction on, on capping the, the manufacturing facilities.
Well, I, I know that was, I mean, I don't know if everyone's read the 2129, the bill, the legislative act, but it's 300 pages, so, you know? If you don't have anything to do over the weekend, but it's, they're not, it's not in that. But it's pointed out that we, we have the right to limit. So I raised the question, then, I guess, you didn't put it in there because nobody told you to. And so I raised the question as part of our discussion.
I'm sorry.
Production.
Production.
We're, we're, we have the right.
Sure.
I mean.
It's a Bible business, though. I'd limit each one of those. Why I would limit that.
Yeah, well, there, there are issues, and, you know, if you don't like it, then, you know, I understand that, but.
I, I have a question.
We've got no consideration.
That's, that's might be relevant.
Because we didn't raise it. Let Donna ask her question.
So the law, most recently enacted, that allows personal use of marijuana up to a certain amount, allows that use in any public space that would permit smoking? How does this law, how do we read this law? Because I, I read an article, it lets you possess it, it also lets you smoke it, though. Actively smoke it, as far as, because I read an article, I didn't get the whole gist of it, but it did imply that towns had the ability to zone, perhaps, where we allowed recreational use.
Ingestion, you mean?
Exactly. So can, can, so we're so concerned about limiting it, but can I go to Schultz Park and sit on a bench and smoke one down? You know, like.
I think in the absence of a, of a, of a smoking or ingestion ordinance.
I could, right.
Often towns kind of pair, have been pairing this discussion with a, a smoking ordinance or additions to their smoking ordinance if there was an existing one, and then the, you know, the, the retail or manufacturing side, the use side.
I would be less concerned about the retail or the manufacturing, as I would with people.
So Wendy Maxtudis was here.
Let's back up here. Remember, that zoning is permitting a use on a property.
Right.
Right.
Where people smoke it and how they use it is something that I think is up to the selectmen. It's not in our purview of things to chase down.
That's what I'm asking, I, I.
So Wendy Maxtudis was here after our last discussion, and she actually came over and talked to George. That is something that she's bringing up. I'm not saying I don't know if it is in our purview, but it is something she was concerned with as well.
The smoking on public property?
Or just.
No, we're actually concerned about it even in the Simsbury Town Center Zone.
Legislative action already covers it on state and federal. That's, that's not something for consideration, that's, it's not allowed.
I understood that it possibly was something that we could do.
But in, on state and federal, it's resolved, it's not allowed.
Right.
But for town-owned property or public, it's a misnomer, just to say it's public, it has to be town-owned. The town has the right to regulate that. And if not, then why wouldn't it be treated just like liquor? The regulation of liquor. And in any park in Simsbury, you can drink liquor.
Right.
So.
Well, you are limited in public to have an open bottle. On public streets.
The question is more, is it, is it up to us as a governing body? Or is it up to the Board of Selectmen? Which is what's the question.
It's up to the selectmen to monitor that.
We can pass that by.
Yeah, I don't know. We got enough things.
Chris, Chris Peterson's insistence the other night in that meeting, it seemed to me like George got a clear direction to get something from the town attorney that's clear. Who's, can we have an ordinance that prohibits and a regulation that allows? Created by two different bodies, the zoning commission on the one hand, and there's a Board of Selectmen on the other. I don't know if you heard the same thing I did, I just watched it on TV, but.
I don't think zoning regulates behavior. Zoning regulates land.
Well, well, let's, let me ask that. Do we have anything on the books regarding alcohol consumption or smoking in our zoning regulations?
No, we permit the sale.
So with just the sale, but not the consumption?
We do limit consumption on, in parks. I can't remember, the school property, definitely.
We have, but is that in the zoning?
Concerts all the time.
Yeah.
So are we gonna, well, I happen to.
I guess then there's enforcement, which is a whole other thing.
I mean, it's total bunches, yeah.
I think there's probably a distinction to be made, that the Performing Arts Center, I don't think qualifies as a park, but I don't.
Yeah.
I'm not an attorney.
Well, it's town property, though.
The town owns it, but it's not a park. They own the schools, but they're not parks. They're controlled by the.
So my, my point is, you know, the, the stores, the manufacturing are highly regulated. So I would be less concerned about them, and just would wanna consider where we're gonna have people smoking.
I mean, I think it's gonna be very different. We were, you know, we're at the beach all summer, and trust me, they're definitely smoking on the beach. So, you know, allowed or not, it's definitely going to be different, but I don't know if we can.
So.
I'm, I'm not saying good, bad, or indifferent, I'm just.
Again, that's, our regulations, if you look at our regulations, we're gonna have a special exception that goes with the property that says that property can be used for that use. If we restrict it to one, it brings a question up of.
It's always that property.
It's always that property.
It's always that property.
We had that discussion as to whether there can be a limit if it's not used, if they can lose the right to it.
Yeah, and that's a serious thing with abandonment of a special exception. And that's not an easy thing to deal with. I wonder if anybody has used site plans instead of special exception to permit use. And in that case, we could, it would be easier to change. If somebody didn't use it, you get a site plan, and he promised he was gonna sell marijuana somewhere, and then didn't do it, and somebody else came in and said, I wanna do it.
Somewhere else.
Well, in a, yeah, in a different property.
Right.
How would we terminate the guy's right that we've given to the first property? If it's on, the land record says a right for that property, it's very hard to get it off. I think we should ask a land use attorney, and not sit around wasting our time trying to work with it. By some other mechanism, just like a site plan amendment, saying this site plan amendment permits the sale of marijuana in this spot, and if you don't exercise that, you forfeit it.
I agree, and I think Bruce has a good idea to have a land use attorney.
Well, you know, I'm just. First, we have to give them the framework.
Yeah, right.
Well, we don't want it misunderstood. Right now, we're, we're having a discussion.
Correct.
About some language, we're not voting. And so, you know, I, I think that the, the, what we give to an attorney needs to be characterized not as our target, this is what we want, but this is kinda what we're thinking. We haven't voted on it.
We wanna know what our boundaries are.
If we don't vote until we have all the time and money invested in the language, well, I think that's where we're headed, but.
Dave, can I?
You know, if, it doesn't matter, if we don't endorse the retail sale of cannabis in Simsbury, we still need to do something about regulating, to the extent that we can, public consumption of cannabis, you know, smoking in public center. Because they, they're gonna be able to buy it in Canton, or buy it in Bloomfield, or whatever. I mean, we know there's some towns, I don't know if those are the.
In their backyard.
Yeah, but, but it's legal to buy elsewhere under Connecticut statute. And there's a 50-plus-year-old law that I think we're all attuned to, or should be, that under federal law, cannabis sales is prohibited. And has been since 1970, and one of, one of the more unusual things that Richard Nixon paid attention to, but it's still the law. It's the federal law.
I've never seen anybody like that.
I think George has done what we asked him. We, we've asked him now to consider putting a limit on the number of production sites that could be allowed in town. Well, do we need to have an attorney confirm that we are allowed, that we have the latitude to stipulate the number of sites, or the number of permits for each one of those business categories that are stipulated in the new statute? I think we have the right, right, George? According to the state statute.
So, so I, I think, I think you do have the right, but once we get to a place where you're at least comfortable with some of the language, it, it of course is gonna go to the town attorney. And I can do that, we can do that, we can do that now in this interim, and kind of, we, staff has its own, you know, series of questions, particularly related to, if you do have one, does it stay with the land? How do you, how do you get another location? I mean, I think lots of planners in towns are trying to figure that out right now, but certainly that, the question, you've asked a couple of questions here that, that would obviously, I would, I would take to the town attorney.
I thought that, I was hearing about stipulating a number of years. That if the permit is granted and the place isn't operational within the next number of years, the authorization expires, or lapses, or whatever.
One of the issues with the timing is that, again, that, that special exception goes with the land, so is there something else we can do to tie a condition to?
Use.
The achieving a license at the state level, and if you don't, then perhaps that could expire.
Lapses.
It could lapse if you don't, if you don't get that. But I, again, I still, you're still faced with this issue of the special exception that does run with the land and outside of abandonment. That, I mean, that doesn't mean you couldn't have, you know, more than one, more than one special exception issued in the community that, that it gets, it gets complicated. If, if you've got a special exception issued, but it's not open, or it didn't get its license, or failed, or went out of business, and then we have got, we have another one that's open. I mean, I, I think administratively, we could be able to manage that, but I, I think it is a question for the, for the town attorney.
How does it work with package stores if we're limited there, and one is abandoned? When can we move it to another location?
Well, a package store can move 1,000 feet without any.
We have that language already in, in the ordinance. I don't know that we've been faced with that.
Because I thought we had like one left of our allocation.
That's what, that's what I understand.
But we have, you know, there's one in Tariffill that is, well, I guess it, no, it's more than 1,000 feet that it moved.
But we approved one that's not built, that we approved one that's.
Yeah, there's one down.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there, there are a number of towns that have, particularly on, you know, on the, on the, on the liquor store side, that, that have issued more special exceptions than they have.
Yeah, so does that limit, so that mean?
Because, and, and I think in that case, they, you know, they can occupancy if they've got, you know, their number open, 11 of them or 6 of them, and you, you just can't open it.
You can have the, you can have the right to open it.
You can have the permission.
But you can't get the license from the state because you're not allowed by the town.
Right.
It's a, it's a complicated issue, and that's.
Correct.
I'm, I'm not sure that, that there isn't a role that the selectmen need to, need to portray or play in the same way we had with the, with the short-term rentals. The control over people smoking, I think you'd rather be able to call a cop and say, I won't take that out of my, out of my business, because we're not allowed to smoke in here. You don't wanna have to go to the ZBA.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's fair to say that we want the smoking, the use addressed by the selectmen. We'd still need to address the, where it is allowed, and I would be in favor.
Where's the sale?
The manufacturing being multiple, I mean, if more people want it, that doesn't impact the regular. People don't even know what's going on in the, in the current one. The, we, we did talk about limiting the retail use, though. And that's where we came up with 1,500. Actually, I think for lighting, we used of the, of the closest property line to, I think we did like 400. we did like 400 feet or something, the closest property line to Route 44, because I'm not sure where the 1,500 square feet gets us.
So it's linear.
It encompasses all of the B3.
It does?
That's, that's how I came up with 1,500.
Okay, all right, as long as it does.
The math on, on, you know, essentially, you've got a, a car dealership property, a mixed-use property on, on one side, and the other side is, is a retail center, and they're kind of long as they stretch out down Bushy Hill, and so that's.
All right, so it could go as far as, we're near Bertucci's there. Okay, all right, and where those stores are, and then down to Stop &amp; Shop, and then across the street where Dunkin' Donuts is and all that place.
Yes.
Okay, and then where, just thinking of the open retail stores.
Yeah, I'm sorry, would they be able to be in like that Bed Bath &amp; Beyond Plaza? Does that?
Yeah.
That is.
Well, that's the way it's drafted.
Right next to the movie theater.
Yes, it would be permitted to go there.
Inquiring minds wanted to know whether Herman Drive would be a better location. I'm not going to say who the inquiring mind is, but she's not allowed to speak.
Particular challenge for some of us.
Herman Drive is, is East Granby, almost.
Yeah, well, we went down here because it was Avon, so.
Yeah, we, yeah, I think that's, I don't know what you people think about that, the north end.
Jackie's not allowed to speak, so we don't.
She can't speak.
We're having a discussion.
We're having a discussion.
Yeah, this is not.
Are we allowed to speak right now?
I've been allowed to talk this whole time.
Yeah, about cannabis.
A discussion, you're like.
I'm like, why is Tucker like sitting there?
No. Hold on.
Wait, wait.
Yeah, yeah.
I think Route 44 is way more commercial and retail. Herman Drive is industrial. It doesn't make sense that, you have to think about the use, and would somebody even want to have that location in Herman Drive? It doesn't make sense to me.
My concern is that.
It's the only one in town, they don't mind, I'm sure.
Okay, we'll let, we, we, the alternates may join in this conversation, one at a time, I wonder.
Can the inquiring mind go?
Go ahead.
So my concern is, you know, Home Goods just announced it's moving to Avon. There are a number of vacant stores in that area already as it is. If, if this is going to be seen as an undesirable by other tenants, you know, if, if cannabis moves in, does the Gap move out? Do we somehow facilitate a mass, a further mass exodus?
Well, you're putting that on the landlord.
From that area?
Yeah, that's not our discussion.
It's not our role. The owner decides that.
I think we have.
I mean, you know.
If that's the only area we're allowing it, you know.
In this draft document, that's true.
Yeah, I hear you.
That's the only place we're going to allow it, but.
Just a minute.
No, I'm, I'm saying, oh, go ahead.
I was saying, Melissa's making a good point.
Yeah.
Because you're basically gonna be making, I would think, several of those properties very undesirable.
But again, as Jackie's point, because I hear what you're saying, I do, but I do feel like there's, that's a retail spot, this is retail. I mean, I envision this being like, I mean, I don't think this, I don't, I don't think anybody's gonna build dispensary, and it's gonna be like, you know, a dump, I mean, I think they're gonna probably make it really nice, and even if they don't, the point is, it is the landlord's decision as to whether or not they want to allow that, so we're just saying they can, but they still have to find a spot that's willing to, to lease to them.
But don't we want?
Within that small geographic area, that's what we do.
Don't we want, isn't the point that we're allowing this, this business in our town because it's a good economic decision, and, and it's legal, and if we're putting it in a place that a landlord's going to not do it anyhow, because it may have an adverse impact on his other business, that we're not really taking the economic benefit of it to begin with at all, because the landlords won't do it?
And why don't we get the economic benefit by putting it someplace where a landlord might be more amenable to it?
I guess we're just assuming that the landlord wouldn't want it. I guess what we're saying is that it's the landlord's decision. The landlord might be like, hell, yeah, excuse me, yeah, that'd be great, you know? I mean, we don't know. I don't know, I, I would, I would lean towards putting it near the retail.
It's a four-laned road.
It is.
That's what we talked about last time.
But you're not gonna drop your kids off probably at the Gap and Starbucks if it's right next to the cannabis store.
Well, you wouldn't drive your kids off there anyway because it's totally unwalkable, and it's entirely car-dependent, so people tend not to walk there anyway. So.
And how do you feel about?
Sorry, that's not where you're going there.
How do you feel about transitory development, Tucker?
Anyway, I don't think we can solve the world's problems about whether or not people are gonna go out of business and not, if we permit it. I think our job is to decide what makes sense for the town, and do the best we can, hold a public hearing, listen to what people say, and then pass a regulation. But we're just in the beginning of discussion about it. You know, it's a good point, what if that's such a, a different use that nobody else wants to be around? You know, I don't know, I, I think we can discuss that and come to a conclusion that yes or no.
Yeah, I don't think you see that with a package store, for example. People aren't gonna say, I don't want to have my retail store next to a package store.
No, but you had, for, for 50 years or 100 years, we had the distances between the churches and the, I mean, you, you couldn't have a restaurant with a, with a liquor license and a wine license in this Avon there because there was a church there.
Right, but in, in Simsbury, it isn't until people come in here with an application that they find out, oh, there's no distance anymore, I could have had my store next to the grammar school. I didn't know that. People still think.
There's not a distance from schools?
Yeah, exactly. Oh, no, there isn't.
Really?
No. Churches, schools, veterans' homes, all sorts of things that we could use as standards if we wanted to regulate that for cannabis retail.
Okay, let's decide what we'd like George to do next, so that when we have our meeting in September, we're a little closer to.
I like your idea, Dave, of looking at maybe a site plan or having, having the town attorney. I think that's a great suggestion.
Well.
No, no, ask them how we can.
How we can.
How we limit it to one if they don't, if it's not built, or if they turn it. I think that's the question for the attorney.
We got the special exception question is, do we really want to do it by special exception where it goes with the land, or do you want to do it by?
Well, they both go by the land. They both go by the land.
The site plan doesn't go on the land records.
And it doesn't have a public hearing.
And it doesn't have a public hearing.
And it has a shorter, shorter approval.
Shorter approval thing, but we, do we have more flexibility in what we approve in a site plan conditions than we would in the conditions of a special exception? For example, we could put a time limit on it, whereas we have in the past put time limits on special exceptions, which is really illegal, but we don't do it anymore. But in a site plan, could we give them a, a site plan permit for a period of time rather than make it?
I, I, I guess I would just leave it up to George to talk to, to the attorney about how to best handle this, this situation, he can use his creative legal hat to figure out what's the best way for us to, to make it available if someone doesn't use their, their, their permit to, to take it away.
Yeah.
I would suggest, if you want to keep your cap at one, allowing it in the area we've already talked about, or, or and, an industrial area. That way, if the landlords down in retail really don't want to do this, and somebody with an entrepreneurial spirit up in an industrial area wants to do it, there's still an opportunity to have, you know, benefit.
Melissa, you're making up hypotheticals, and we're gonna get too many levels of this. Let's, let's let George.
I don't want anyone doing that.
Think about the problem and see if we can't get advice from other locations, as well as attorneys, to see what other people in other towns have done about this particular issue.
We're prepared to talk about it, we've got, we've got a lot of that research.
Okay.
I'm not sure we've solved the particular questions you've raised tonight regarding when you limit them, what happens to the, the special exception, you know, and, and time periods. The, you know, the rest is, you just have to figure out, if you think you're being too limiting in terms of, you know, the area that you've identified, then we should consider some other areas. Industrial is, you know, is it, is it, is a rational example?
Do we have any precedent for like reaching out to land, like large landlords in town and just asking them what they think? You know, I mean, I know what we want, but you know, if they're all like not interested at all, then we can at least factor that into our, our conversation.
Well, I think you have to be careful about portraying anything we've discussed as something we want.
Agreed.
You can say what you want, but.
Yep, yep, yep. I hear what you're saying, yep.
Well, to flip both what you're and Melissa's saying, George is also gonna tell us, if somebody comes to us from a different part of town and says, hey, we want to do it.
Hmm.
That's where.
Your public hearing process will, will also help that.
Okay. So I feel like we're open to that?
Good point. Yep.
And you know, the other, the other thing, it just occurred to me that, I mean, even though traditionally we, we don't have public hearings for site plans, but the zoning commission can always hold a public hearing.
Yes.
You can get a site plan application and say, we should have a public hearing on this, so. So I, I think about that in that context as well.
Yeah.
You know, if we looked towards, more towards the north end of town, like Antonio's and further up, you have all those, particularly on the right-hand side, the individual standalone little stores, is actually a tattoo parlor there, and a few other things like that. Perhaps one of those buildings could be turned into it, and it wouldn't be imposing on landlords, or the Gap, or whatever.
There's a apothecary there already, you know?
Yeah.
Doggy Dick here.
Yeah, I mean, I, again, my feeling personally was always, I prefer not having folks drive through town, I like it being kind of on the perimeter, to me, in my mind, like 44 is more heavily trafficked, so I, that's just me, but, you know, I'm thinking you gotta kind of drive right through the center of town to get in back, and so that would be why I would personally be more leaning towards 44 and that area.
We talked about that, yeah.
Yeah.
And the traffic of 44 being a good.
Well, how do you know they're coming from?
Well, I think that, one of the things that.
If you want pot, you're gonna go.
Well, it'll come up later, but has anybody else been to the marijuana facility in Northampton, Massachusetts? It's for, you know, age 21 and over, anybody who walks in the door. But one of the things, as you go to that place, that you'll see, is that they got parking, track, circulation issues. It's not in the most attractive part of town, but it's right by the highway, so they don't usually go together. Very attractive retail is not at the highway exit, and so if you want easy access, I mean, that's what they did, they put it right by, and they have a limited number in the state of Massachusetts, I, I don't know what it is. I could look it up, but it's, it's a much larger facility than you think, and it's very attractive once you're inside. But when you're outside and you see the security people all around, and the traffic issues, and the signage about which way to drive, and how to get back out and over to the exit and stuff, it's, it's a commitment by a property owner. They really gotta want that.
Well, that, that area in your 44 has a lot of parking. There are a lot, a lot, a lot.
Yeah.
I've driven by, here, you described Massachusetts, way smaller.
You've been in them?
I've never been in there.
Oh, okay.
There are people that have been in there.
Yeah.
And it's much smaller. Our spaces, our space at 44 there is huge.
I'm not talking about the geographic area, I'm talking about, you know, the, the location that they're in, and the location, the spaces they control for parking.
Yeah, it's a lot smaller.
It's busy.
Instead of his.
But people still go there, they don't stay away because there's parking issues.
I don't think that's their biggest concern.
No.
No.
The other place on the north side of town is also probably a good option, though. There's less parking, but it's also less dense just in general. I, I know that you can only have one, but if, if you were gonna have one on either side of town, that would also probably be easy to traffic, eliminate the problem. I know that goes against what had already been decided on just the limit of one, but that's where I'd put them, on either side.
Well, the limit of one is, is something that we decide, it's not a, it used to be a state candidate. Now it's not, so we could amend our regulations from time to time if we saw that the north end was not being served by appropriate number of places.
Maybe one per zone?
It could be.
One per, like, of those two allowed zones?
We could, we could look at that, that way.
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable doing the one, and kind of let's see where this leads